Okay, why don't we, why don't we get started? If I could ask people to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we've got one public speaker, non-agenda item, Assemblymember Marty Block. Assemblymember Block, please.
Well, thank you President Barrera and Board members and Superintendent Calba. It's great to be among friends.
Yeah.
I don't get to come here often enough and it's great to be here, especially on the first day of school. It's a day when everybody's optimistic and happy and you see lots of smiling faces, especially the parents dropping off their kids.
That's right.
And, you know, my wife's a teacher, a lot of you know Cindy, and she's giving up another year of teaching to be with me in Sacramento and work on some policy issues in education, so I greatly appreciate that. And one of the things I've been working on most closely in Sacramento was trying to bring more resources to our schools.
Yes.
As you know, we worked hard on classroom size reduction funding that didn't go through, but we're working on it as part of the budget now. But there's a particularly egregious situation going on now, and you're all aware of it, but I want to make sure that those watching at home and those in the audience know because they can do something important to make sure this funding is restored. In 2009-10, there was an error in the budget where money for something called the Special Disabilities Adjustment, which goes to special ed kids, the neediest kids, autistic children, services for kids with brain injuries, multiple disabilities. This money was appropriated in the budget but wasn't allocated officially to the districts. So districts got it in their budget, and because it was in their budget, they did the right thing and they spent it. And they spent it for important services for special needs kids. Well, now unfortunately, the Superintendent of Public Schools and Public Construction, doing his job, has said he needs to take that money back because the budget that he got didn't include the proper appropriation, proper allocation. For this district, you all know well, it means $18 million over two years. For the County of San Diego, it's about $34 million over two years. It's especially high in San Diego because, largely because of our military presence. The Navy has cited San Diego as being one of two locations nationally that does particularly good job at serving special needs kids. So if a family has special needs kids, they're more likely to be stationed here in San Diego and their children then use the services that your district provides and does such a good job providing. Because of that, it's especially critical to San Diego that we get this money. If we don't get this funding, it means that you've got to find $18 million that you already spent and you've already closed the books on 2009-10. You did it for the right reasons and good faith. To find the $18 million, this district, because you're managed so well, you can take it out of reserves. That's not a good thing, but you can do that. Other districts around the state who aren't as well managed don't have reserves like you do, and they're going to have to possibly lay off teachers, lay off other employees to meet this, to deal with this problem. So, I'm here today because I have a bill that, actually San Diego Unified came to me in Sacramento and said, "We need help on this." It's called AB, Assembly Bill 184. And AB 184 simply restores this $18 million over two years. It fixes the drafting error, really with the drafting error in the budget. It doesn't cost the state anything more in this year's budget because it's already been allocated, it just hasn't properly been appropriated, hasn't been properly allocated to the schools. So, this is a bill that cleared the Assembly by vote of 77 to nothing. Assemblymembers up and down the state understand the importance of it. It cleared the Senate by vote of 34 to nothing. I've got to tell you, in Sacramento with the dysfunction, that's rare to get this kind of unanimous support. So where's the bill now? It's sitting on the Governor's desk. And the Governor, as a lot of us know, is leaving for Asia in just a couple of days. We are hoping he signs this bill before he leaves because if he doesn't, school districts like yours and others around the state are going to just be in some disarray, and again, there may be layoffs in other districts. So I'm here really to ask you all for your support and ask parents in the audience, folks watching on television, to please call the Governor's San Diego office and stress how important it is that this bill be signed. The phone number that I have for the San Diego office is 619-525-4841. I'll repeat that one time, 619-525-4841. And he's got a lot of great people who work in his office, so be nice to them when you call, but be firm. It's important for our kids, for the neediest of our kids, that this bill, S-A-B-184, be signed immediately. Thank you all for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Assemblymember Block, and thank you for standing up and championing the interests of the kids in this district, but also up and down the state with this bill, with the work that you've done on class size reduction. And every time we reach out to you and talk to you about the needs of kids here in San Diego Unified, you step up and you're a champion in the state legislature, so we really very much appreciate that, and we'll make sure that people are calling the Governor. You know, our assumption is that the Governor plans to sign it, but what I think he needs to hear is the problems that are caused every day that he doesn't sign it, so we need him to act quickly. Mrs. Nakamura.
Yeah, Assemblymember Block, you'll remember, I came to you with this last May and we spoke in your office, and you got this bill launched. We were up there with the California School Boards Association, and at that time, I rallied school districts, you know, that are in this county. There were 42 school districts. I'd like people to understand, last week we had a meeting of the California School Boards Association, again, our delegates, and I circulated a sheet of paper to every single one of those with a description of how much money they were lost. And I can't remember of the 42, all of the names, but I know La Mesa Spring Valley, Lemon Grove, Tahisa, there were a lot of school districts within the County of San Diego. So as people are watching this, I want to make sure they understand, it's not simply San Diego Unified in the County of San Diego. It's worth a million dollars, I think, too. I think it's La Mesa Spring Valley, I'm not quite sure, but 700,000, 600,000 here and there. Depending on the size of your budget, it's devastating, and as you said, some of these school districts don't have a reserve. If we have to cut this money, obviously this is special education, and I know you know this very well, but if we have to cut this money, it, you know, it possibly will come out of special education, but we have a duty and an obligation under the American with Disabilities Act to pay for this funding. This will affect arts, music, athletics, a lot of the programs within the district, and maybe even some fundamental core programs, because these are, you know, our most at-risk special education students, as you said. We have an obligation to provide these services, whether we get this money or not, and as you pointed out yourself, it's actually for many of the children in our military, so it's doubly important. I guess my point is, for those of you that are out there, whether you live in San Diego Unified or not, wherever you live in San Diego County, call the Governor's office if you care about this, because there are school districts, not just us, but throughout San Diego, that matter and that count. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblymember Block.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda? A second?
Second.
Please vote.
This isn't working, David.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Richard, for letting me do that.
Thank you. So let's move on to Item C1, our MOU with IFD, and Superintendent?
President Barrera, Board members, we actually have two items here, C1 and C2, that have been provided by Dr. Ruby Boyd and the Charter School Office, and we're essentially asking you to approve C1 as the MOU with the Charter Schools identified there, and then the separation C2 is for the Special Education Memorandum of Understanding. And Ruby is at the podium.
I'm so moved. Thank you.
Any discussion on the Department of Board?
Yeah, there were concerns with IFD and what have changes, you know, that I've had at any rate with regard to the recruitment of students to, you know, for that school. Have they met their obligations, or do we feel satisfied that it's not going to be exclusively for one particular cultural group?
Let me ask Moises about that, because that was transitioned over from Tony Burks. From what I understand, we're still working on that.
That's one of the items that still needs to be followed up. We're going to be looking, we're currently visiting different charter schools at this point, and so that's definitely on our to-do list. This is, this particular item is just a MOU, but that's definitely on our, again, follow-up item, make sure that they've made a commitment to, I believe it was $3,000 for outreach, so we'll definitely be following that up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further discussion. Please vote on Item C1. Okay, and Item C2, can we get a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
This one is the, my computer's off.
The special ed.
The special ed.
Okay, please vote. Great. Okay, thanks, Moises. Okay, let's move on to Item D1, so this is our unaudited actuals, financial report.
President Barrera, I'm going to turn this over to Phil Stover, and I think he'll draw your attention to the unaudited actuals as well as the exhibits that support them.
Good evening, President Barrera, members of the board. What we'd like to do tonight is go with you through the PowerPoint that we have in front of you. We have provided you an updated PowerPoint in your brown folder. There's no data changes in the updated PowerPoint. We enhanced it a bit to point out a little bit about the variations in some of the numbers, the variances that occur. The page numbers are identical, the same, so if you have made notes on your previous version, that won't be a problem, but we've added some verbiage to help explain a few of the variances. Our purpose tonight, as we've come together, is to update you on the closeout of fiscal year 2009-10 and to seek your approval of the unaudited actuals. We are going to be recommending to you the approval of the same, plus the approval of a revised 2010-11 budget. You've just heard our Speaker speak eloquently about why we have to revise our budget, so I won't go into that. And our requirement is to submit this to the County Office of Education tomorrow, along with a resolution identifying the reductions for 2011 and '12 and the target dollar amounts for '12-'13. So, we're going to start first with our unaudited actuals, and I think what we're going to tell you story tonight is we go through this entire document, and the story is a story of spending a bit more than we take in each year. Our revenues and our expenditures don't match for any of the years. We are expending more than we're taking in, and because of that, we're going to see shrinking balances across the line, restricted and unrestricted. As we go through this, you're going to see some of the challenges we have on into the future in our restricted balances, which we haven't had in the past, and that's because the funds like our Copley Funds, our Mesa Funds, our capital funds, state school facilities we've used, those funds are declining significantly, and I will point that out to you, because as we go into next year and the year after that, and the reductions that we have to make this year for those time periods, we're going to have less options in the sense of drawing from reserves, drawing from balances that we have across the board. If you look at page four here, if I could point out to you, and you see there are numbers, line numbers along the side, and letters for the column, so if I showed you B4, our revenues for 9-10, our projection was 1.52, and we were projecting expenditures of 1.121. We actually came in very close to that with column C, unaudited actuals of $1 billion 60 million, and expenditures of $1 billion 125 million. Now, so the good news is that our projections were very close to our actuals, our numbers didn't change through the year. We didn't see wild swings as we have done in the past, but we did have expenditures that were higher than our revenues came in, so we had to pare down some of our other balances in order to achieve equilibrium. Page five and page six is a further breakdown by restricted and unrestricted. Page five is the general fund restricted, 2009-10 unaudited actuals, and page seven are the unrestricted numbers. And you'll see on page five that in, well, let's actually look at our column C, which is the most important to us. In C4, our revenues were $330 million, our expenditures were $481 million. So we had to look at a situation where we spent more than we took in. We also, other sources and uses, we had to bring money in from our unrestricted to our restricted balances, which of course, we don't consider an actual expenditure on the unrestricted side, but it is in a sense that we have to take money from unrestricted to supplement restricted balances where there is not adequate revenue from the funding source. Special ed, a great example of that. We don't get enough money from the state or any of our other sources to fund special education. So each year, as you know, we make a contribution to that from our unrestricted dollars, and of course, that causes us stress on our unrestricted. And you'll see that on the unrestricted side, we have that situation occurring, and on the restricted side as well. On page six, as we have there, column C4, we have revenues of $730 million, we have expenditures of $643 million, so that's the good news. However, we had to supplement $121 million in local contribution, which causes us then between those two to spend more than the revenue that we took in. Every time we have to supplement a restricted resource with unrestricted dollars, that causes us harm. Now, on page seven, here's our changes from projections at the budget adoption this year to our actuals. Our beginning balance is decreased by $6 million due to an ending balance for instructional materials restatement. That was from the year before. Anytime you see the word "restatement" here, it means we had to change a projection that we had made from the year before, before we could even begin the process of looking at this year. Our actual revenues, you can see there, we broke it down for you. Federal impact aid went up, some went down, some went up. You'll see as we go through there. Our interest rate went down, we lost 3.1 in actual, in dollars, actual to what we had projected, 3.1 million, because we had less money in our balances earning interest, and of course, interest rates went down. So on what we did earn interest on, our interest rates were lower, so all in all, we saw a $3.1 million decrease in what we had projected. Page eight, we have our general fund unrestricted expenditure changes. We find here our expenditures decreased by 15.4 million from what we had projected. That's good news. Our utilities, you've often asked about utilities, our utility costs came in $3.4 million, yeah, our costs for utilities came in $3.4 million less, and that was certainly good news. So you'll see there where we came in lower than we had expected. This interprogram for transportation is really a net to zero, you're going to see $10 million out, but you're going to see $10 million back in, because we have flexibility on our TIG funds that we use for transportation, and the state reports, the forms that we use for transportation don't keep up with that flexibility. We had to move some of that from restricted to unrestricted, and it really is a wash, but it looks like it's a hole, but it's an accounting function. Page nine, when we look at changes again in expenditures, we found these contributions I mentioned before, that we have to make from unrestricted to restricted. The 9.1, we had to balance that because that was the SDA funding that we did not get, that we had expected. Our Community Day School, other, this interprogram transfers, that was the, you saw the number as a negative on the page before, here it is as a positive. It really is a wash, but it's an accounting mechanism we had to deal with. This is interesting. All of our funds, now we're getting into the, I think, these numbers tell us a lot when we take our time and actually read them. At the very top there, our general fund unrestricted, look at our beginning balances. Our beginning balance for 9-10 was $92,980,000. Go over to the very last column and look at the ending balance. Ending balance of our unrestricted general funds went from 92 at the beginning of, 93 at the beginning of the year, to 57.2 at the end of the year. That's our challenge, that's a real problem, because we have not made enough reductions in expenditures to keep up with the reductions in revenues. We keep having to look at balances, funds, to make up the difference. If you'll look at the general fund restricted, the general fund restricted started out in the year at $71 million, ended up at $39.7 million for a reduction of $31 million. Between our two unrestricted and restricted general funds, we reduced the beginning balance to the ending balance by $66 million, and that is really, really significant to us. And then you go down through these individual items, you'll see how our different accounts' balances have diminished. Let me show you the reserve for capital. If you go down to the reserve for capital, just to highlight a few for you. Reserve for capital, that's our Copley and our Mesa Fund. We started the year at 36.2, we ended at 28.0. Our school facilities, we talk about school facilities dollars a lot. We started the year at $234 million, we ended the year at $201 million. Self-insurance funds, started at 66, we ended at 58, and we really can't go any lower than that because the actuarial folks tell us that that would not be responsible at all for us to do that. So what this page shows us is, in reality, the declining balances that we have pretty much are across the board. Page 11, the chart here just compares 8-9 with 9-10, the 9 fiscal year with the 10 fiscal year, and you'll see that, and these are revenue comparisons, you can see how our revenue decreased on the unrestricted side, on the restricted side, it went up just a little bit, and we have some explanations under there for that. In almost every situation, you'll see the variances between 9 and 10, that revenue goes up, it goes down, but it presents us real, real, real challenges. And the Prop S, of course, is a big bump in '09 because we had, that's a timing function. We got in April, we did the bonds last year, this year we didn't do it till August, so we really went '09-10 without any additional revenue in Prop S. So that's an anomaly, don't let that scare you, but because one was April of '08-9 and one was August of 10-11, we kind of skipped over there without any revenue from that. Page 12, our expenditures. You can see our expenditures follow a fairly similar pattern. On the restricted side, they did go up instead of going down, and the rest, you can see the variances, you know, as they go there. Page 13, very, very interesting, our revenue limit. Now this breaks down our general fund revenue by type, by category. Our revenue limit funds in '08-'09 were $637 million. We lost 79, almost $80 million in revenue limit funds between 9 and 10. Very, very significant. Federal funds, you see, went down 9.8. Our other state, and a lot of times I get asked, "Well, what's in that other state? What's in that other local revenue?" Our other state revenue are funds like special ed, all of our categoricals, our lottery funds, our TIG funds. You can see those are down, not real significantly, only 1%. Our other local funds are down very significantly. Those are our local interest rates that we earn, our E-rate, donations, local grants, leases, rentals, those kinds of situations. Now, part of that is an anomaly, the reason we're down so much, because our ACES grant for after-school education is $27 million, and this year we had to move that, we've always recorded that in the past as local revenue, we had to move that this year up to other state revenue. So it looks like we took a huge hit on other local revenue, but remember that of that 37, 27 was a transfer up into other states. So what it really is doing is masking the loss of other state revenue. Just think of 27 moving up a line, and we're still down 3. If we hadn't moved that up, we'd be down 30. So it's masking the financial reality of it. Any way you look at it, our revenues are certainly decreasing. And again, these are the, none of the data has changed, we've added some further explanations for you to give you some more input. Expenditures, general fund by major account. Now we're looking at our major accounts that we have, some interesting comparisons here for you. Our overall certificated salaries from the '08-9 to the 9-10 school year went down 5.48%. Classified salaries went down 2.71%, but our benefits went up. At the same time, salaries are going down, benefits going up. Our benefit costs have increased every year to a very significant degree. Our books and supplies, this is one that always has stood out to me as I look at these numbers. Our books and supplies went from $62 million in expenditures to $43.8, that's a decrease of 29.5%. Now that is books and supplies across the district, not just academic. We put, even our fuel costs, our fuel costs, for example, it is a missile.
Books and supplies.
It is, it is not, it is not just instructional books and supplies, it is not just non-instructional books and supplies. It is a account where we account for expenditures of a lot of miscellaneous things, not activities and not people, but things. And you'll see how our expenditures went down in that particular area. That's the number that stands out the worst, the biggest there. Page 15, we have our summary by resources. We try to show you this as many different ways as we can, and I think after we get done with this unaudited, maybe we'll break and take a few questions before we get into the budget, so that we can have a natural break here. And again, look at the beginning balance and the ending balance. Our unrestricted, on page 15, our unrestricted beginning balance, 92.98, almost $93 million, ending balance, $57.2 million. All others, and remember, we're looking at this now by resources, 64.2 million to begin with, 32.8 million. And when you go down to the very, very bottom line, our totals, beginning balances of all these different resources were $164 million. We ended the year at $97 million. That's a $66 million, the same, I showed you before, the same $66 million, we're just looking at it here by resource instead of overall dollar amount. That is really going to cause us challenges as we move forward, because we're going to have less and less, again, of those kinds of extra dollars in our balances that we can use to solve some of our problems. Now, all of our funds, now we're going to look at them by function, and these are our 1,000s, 2,000s, 3,000s, you hear referred to by the finance folks an awful lot. Our instructional costs, which are salaries and books, now these are pretty much pure instructional costs. There you see that's down 4.31%, and you can go down there and see as we go through the increases and decreases as we go down. Our enterprise fund, the 6,000s, for your information. Our enterprise funds, the 6,000s, for your information, that may be a term you're not familiar with. Our enterprise funds are our self-insurance funds. So our self-insurance funds are showing a 21.27% increase. Plant service funds, remember, we have all of our different, everything, maintenance, any Prop S money that we get, any matching funds, remnants are in that. So our self-insurance funds actually went up 4.6. It would have gone up 9, but we took 4.3 out of it to help balance the budget for this year. So those are, that's the kind of the story on the unaudited actuals. The good news is our numbers were stable. They stayed constant. Our actuals came in very close to our projections. The warning signs are that we spent more than we took in. We depleted an awful lot of our balances in order to balance our budget, and I think we may have to look at, remember, the cuts that we give you, and we say it's $127 million, or you have to cut 70 million, that's to get us to zero. And we have to maybe do better than that in the sense of overall cutting expenditures to match revenue cuts as we see revenue cuts come in. Some of it's projecting, because we don't know, we don't have a budget yet. We don't know exactly what's going on. And also, keep in mind that all the numbers that you're seeing here are reflecting the SDA reductions, which if, if we get the good news that the governor has signed the bill, that restores for '09-10, the nine, up close to $9 million. And it will restore for 10-11, the $9 million for this current year. It will not restore for next year, but it will fund a study to see if they want to do it for the next year. So with the SDA challenges in there as well, if the governor had signed the bill, we would have a little bit of a different presentation for you at this point, especially since we're looking at 910 specifically.
Okay, so I want to go to Board comments and questions, but can we just get a motion first to approve the 910 unaudited actuals? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. DeBeck?
Well, I, sometimes I don't know where to start, but I'm going to start with page two. Each of the, each of the pages that have changes in them, if you look at them, the explanation is it's somewhere else behind. It would be useful, and I think to the public as well as to me, that when there are changes, as much as, let's say, I'm using the example, a change of expenditures of $4 million on page four, that, that referred to a page on which those changes were. In other words, where's the $4 million come, what is it that makes up the $4 million? They've got a bracket here with a negative, that I can understand, but then where would somebody look to find where that $4 million is? You've got it back there somewhere, but it doesn't index, so nobody could tell you except, okay, we trust you. Okay, so you can go to another one that really is frightening, is other sources and uses with a 271% change, and just a number, and what's that all about? What's the difference between that and the previous thing? Maybe it was historical, but all you have to do is show that there was some historical reason why that number was different, like either more expenditures or less. But I'm not even sure if people would understand that other sources and uses are either expenses or not. If it was indebted as a part of expenditures, I'd understand it better, but other sources and uses looks like it's a separate category all by itself, and it could include income or negative expenses, I don't know. So, you know, if you've got revenues and expenditures, and then what's other? Is it other expenses?
Yeah, we have.
Okay, well, I'm just, you know, you go through your stuff, now I'm going to go through my stuff.
Sure, sure.
I mean, you know, don't answer me one at a time. Answer me all at once, just like you expected me.
Okay.
All right, now, we go down the line, the required reserves are all cumulative, and so we have a negative required reserve, which means that we must have spent some of the reserves, and that would be, in the case of, for example, restricted grant carryover, I'd expect a backup, because your unaudited actuals show that you didn't carry over as much. So whenever there's like changes, one's a positive and one's a negative, I would expect some backup line that would say that's what it is. It's probably there, but you're assuming that I could carry back to some page 16, or 15, or 14, or wherever where they are, and I think that reference should be part of the document, so that any fool like me could just say, well, I want to look at that for backup right now, so I'll go back and find it. But it's not there. And when I see that kind of report from commercial firms or people that I might have investments in, it'll always have an index where I can go see it. I understand that public accounting is not the same as, okay, for profit accounting, but I think the fact that you can refer to what a figure is made up of is not something we need to apologize for. I think it should be there. So let's go back down the line. So I think clarity is not part of what I see here. Now, I want to go to things like the one that's my usual and favorite, and I'm going to go, charts are useless to me. They may be graphically pretty, but they don't necessarily tell you why a difference occurs, other than there is a difference. Okay, so now, we go to, well, the one, now, let's see, what's the page? See, that's why it's so important not to do it after, but, you know, I'm going to play your game. So on page 14, books and supplies, shows $18 million difference, or a 29% difference on page 14. And, but I know that books and supplies aren't books and supplies. Everybody knows that, except the public. And that title should be miscellaneous expense, and then it should have in it subsets of what those miscellaneous expenses are. And I don't care what the state accounting code cares about. I care about what I care about and what the public wants to know. And if we're going to talk about transparent government, we better not fool them with the word books and supplies when we mean miscellaneous expense. Now, if you want to use the books and supplies parentheses miscellaneous, that's okay with me, but then the subset of that would be, under the 4,000 category, you'd have what those real numbers are, 4,001, 4,002, you know, the decimal equivalents of that. But it's entirely possible that the reason why there's differences is that there were budget transfers during the year, and that would be part of the explanation, because you told us, and I heard you, that there's no personnel numbers in there, but that's not true. It's a common practice in the school district to put in the miscellaneous expense, the books and supplies, and then later transfer it to personnel expenses. It's done all the time. I did it for years, I know it's done. I'm not going to fool around about it. I just want to know what it is. So if there were transfers in, from books and supplies, out of it, or into it, that had to do with personnel, like canceling jobs, or freezing salaries, or whatever you want to do, so be it. But don't mix me up, or the public either. Okay? Now, I'm not blaming you, because this is all standard state accounting structure. I'm not going to get into that. The argument is, yes, we got to make the reports like we make them to the state, and they don't care what John DeBeck cares about, or what the public cares about. They only care that you send them the numbers that fit. But the public cares. And the public doesn't understand this accounting code, or this structure at all. So my job, since I think I represent the public, is to ask those questions, to get onto the focus of what this is all about. Sure, we could turn them a bunch of papers, a J200 budget, ta-da, here it is, hooray, we did it, but that doesn't mean that anybody could make sense of it. Our job is to make sense of it and translate that to the public, so they understand why we're where we are financially, not our ending balance is different. Our ending balance is terribly different. But why? Why is an important question that isn't answered by this. So I guess I'm done, because frankly, unless I could interrupt you as we went and ask you why, 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 the answer is, it's what it is. Okay? It's what it is.
First of all, thank you to staff for pulling this together. You know, it's an awful lot of work to keep these numbers running all the time. I do think it would be helpful if we had at the beginning of this, that, you know, that there is some graphic representing the cycle, because we have our projected budget, we have our adopted budget, we have our unaudited actuals, which is the point in the cycle which we are discussing today, right here with this last conversation, and then we have our audited actuals. You know, to have that cycle, you know, could probably, would be helpful, along with, you know, when our first interim report is, and, you know, just to show people, you know, a simple graphic, I put the interim reports in, and then, you know, with those different, that there are different stages in the budget that we are discussing, and I don't think there's anything confusing about that at all. I would like also, you know, I've talked about this before, first of all, I want to congratulate staff on getting the third edition of the budget book out. I looked, I was looking at it this weekend. It's getting better and better. We need to, you know, there's always room for improvement, and I, you know, I, my fantasy, I've got a sad fantasy life, but that we would have something like Quicken, where you could go to a number on this and maybe click on it and click down, you know, hyperlink to either a narrative that describes, you know, what happened with that particular number, or, you know, down into a deeper budget, you know, where you have on, in the Quicken, you'd have a pie graph, for example. You can click on a particular portion of the pie graph, and that will break down. And if you don't have a copy of Quicken, it's really simple to use. So we need, if we can get more towards that. But the questions with regard to this budget, it's just a tragedy. I mean, what we're having to deal with, we've been working on this since, gosh, since I've been on the board, it feels like, for the last eight years, you know, that we have gotten to this position. But I am concerned also with the issue with regard to, and I know you all try to be as clear as you possibly can, having the all-funds ending balance and the year-to-year comparison was very helpful. It's good to know when that, where we are is to next, you know, last year, and I think anybody that's been following this knows why we're where we at with the state budget crisis, and with the, you know, special disabilities adjustment, which is essentially why we're here today. I do worry about that books and supplies number being so large on page number 14, you know, a 29% drop on that. You know, this gets into that whole toilet paper debate, you know, where parents, particularly at the beginning of the year, particularly in areas where we don't have extra funding, like Title I, and schools where we don't have extra funding, like, you know, foundations or parents with the wherewithal to bring supplies to school and to supplement, which parents shouldn't have to do. I will say this, I say it every time, when we ask parents to bring basic, essential things to their schools, even if they can afford it, they are always going to wonder, what else is my kid not getting? If they can't even get their act together to supply paper and pencils, the most elemental, you know, parts of what a child should have to go to school, then what else, you know, I mean, if this, it just makes us look incompetent, I think. And so, that's something I, you know, I just want to bring that up with regard to books and supplies. I think we know why we're here today, and, you know, this is, so far, I think it's a good presentation. Always room for improvement, but, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. Use it up, wear it out, make do, or do without, you know, at the beginning of the year. That's simply what we're going to have to remember at the beginning, and we're going to have to turn austerity into a virtue. So, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Oden.
Okay. First of all, I thank you for this report. I must say that from a couple of years ago, when I started looking at budgets, that is becoming more and more intelligible. I mean, getting a much clearer picture of what's going on, and as Ms. Nakamura said, there's always room for improvement. I certainly agree with Mr. DeBeck about the books and supplies issue. We've come into the same thing with the whole issue of central office, and we wanted to cut down central office expenses, and then we find out that technically, under accounting categories, that central office expenses included the custodians and other people who were doing things right at the school site, which is not what the lay interpretation of central office is. And so I think, I understand there are accounting rules and so forth, but we need to be very clear, both with the board and with the public, about exactly what these things are. For example, I see on here pupil services, and there's a good explanation below about student services, transportation, food services, counseling, and nurses. And we can kind of see in here that some of the things and priorities that we have set in terms of having adequate staffing at the schools, and we have decreased instruction expenses by significantly decreasing the number of teachers we have, we've still maintained a certain basic core of counselors and nurses and so forth to back them up. But I just think we need to be really, really clear on exactly what all of these things are. Now, I know that what this is leading to is where we are headed, and I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. One is the issue of spending more money than we're taking in, which is obviously not a good economic thing to do. But the reality is that when you have a student in third grade, and you need to get that student through third grade, you use whatever resources you have to get the student through that year, and then you will worry about the next year, about fourth grade, and fifth grade, and sixth grade, since that's the cycle that the state has us on in terms of giving us the budget each year. So I think it's important to just note that we, yes, we did have to cut into funds and so forth, but that was to keep from cutting essential programs. Now, obviously, this is leading up to the point where we are going to have to cut essential programs unless something happens dramatically. Another comment was about one of the problems related to overspending is that a lot of, let me get this straight, between the restricted and unrestricted, unrestricted funds are used to cover items that are paid for by restricted accounts, because we don't get enough funding, and the key example of that is special education. And we just need to be clear that that is not, that that's going to continue to happen as long as we have mandates for things that are not funded, that we will always need to supplement that with unrestricted funds, that that's not a, that's not a shortcoming of our budget planning, that's just the reality in terms of how the money comes to us. But I think the, this is very good in terms of looking at where we're at right now, and the message is just getting clearer and clearer that we have cut just about everything we can cut without cutting into the core, and that's what we're looking at with future cuts, unless we come up with some alternatives.
Okay. We've got a motion in a second. Please vote on the approval of the unaudited actuals. Okay, moving on to the second item, which is the 10-11 budget. I don't know that we need to go through a lot of this in detail. I think we did this last week, but I think the basic, you know, discussion was, you know, what happens if the governor still has failed to sign the SDA bill? He's failed to sign it. The staff is recommending that we reduce our reserve down to the 0.67%.
Would you see in red there?
Which we see in red.
I put that in red, so it would be highlighted.
So I would ask for a motion there, but maybe the motion can state that, but as soon as the governor signs the bill, that the reserve, you know, is restored back to 2%?
So move. Second.
Okay.
I'd just like to comment that what we're doing here is, in this emergency period when we don't have the funding, is using the reserve fund, but if for some reason the governor does not approve these funds, then we need, have to revisit this, because we're in a very dangerous low level of reserves. So some people have interpreted that we're using reserves for budget shortfall, and that's not the case, other than on a very temporary basis.
Okay. Please vote. Okay. And then I think it's the third and fourth items, I think we could do with one motion. It's a motion to approve the multi-year projections for 11, 12.
Move approval.
And the resolution for 12, 13. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Okay. Good. And just very quickly, is there, I mean, can we present, especially on this books and supplies? and supplies line item, can we present in the way Mr. DeBeck has suggested?
Yes, absolutely. What we have done is we have cut out, I would say, significant amount of the misuse of this fund for personnel cost. The one, the one area that we don't have a firm handle on yet is hourly. I cannot tell you that none of that, those expenditures are going to hourly, but they are no longer going into providing FTEs or significant parts of FTEs as they were four years ago. So that has been, but we can certainly present that in a different way.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Stover. And I just want to reiterate what Assemblymember Block has encouraged everybody in the public to do, call that number to the governor's office. We are now in a precarious position. Please sign this bill so we can put our reserve back up to 2 percent.
Okay. There's a point of order. For me, I'm uncomfortable with the vote that did not include that we voted exact, on the resolution itself. It may have been a part of an attachment, but I honestly believe that the resolution to identify the amount of budget reductions is more important than just voting on the agenda itself. It's an attachment A of the exhibit. But see, in our thing, it says, it says we, that approve the resolution identifying the amount of budget reductions. That's on the PowerPoint, page 24. But the, but the actual resolution isn't part of the visual part of the-
The actual reductions.
Well, I don't care about that because this says we're going to fix them to do it. You know what I mean? The resolution says not that we have the actual reductions, but that we're planning to do it. Okay? That I can support because we still have the responsibility, according to the resolution, of identifying these reductions specifically by a given time.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we want to, if the ruling is that we approve the resolution, so be it. But see, normally, we have resolutions as a separate item that we approve. So that's my point of order. You know, if we, I personally would rather move that we approve the resolution and have it seconded and voted on than have it just carried on to action that we did. That's my personal view. I mean, I think it's that important. So I move the resolution.
But you're-
It may be redundant, but doggone it, I think the resolution is important enough to be on its own.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding, Mr. DeBeck, that you're moving the resolution to do what?
Look at the resolution. The resolution is what we filed. It says attachment A, and it's supposed to say resolution number, but it doesn't have a number, okay? And then it says resolution, it's attachment A to the exhibit for B, for whatever one, you know, whatever we're currently on. But for me, I think the resolution is a significant document that needs to have its own separate approval. That's what I'm saying, as a, and I'll ask for a ruling from legal or whoever. You know, how do you pass resolutions without putting them on the agenda as a resolution?
Mark?
Yeah, I think my understanding of the board's action is it included the adoption of the resolution.
Okay, then if that's the case, all right.
I don't think it's a legal question as much as a procedural one. So if, the board can certainly, if there's a second and a desire to go ahead and adopt it separately, that can also-
So the understanding is that the motion included the approval of the resolution?
Certainly.
It did.
All right.
It always does. Mark?
All right. That concludes our meeting. Thank you. We do not need to go.
Hope the Padres win tonight.